Okay, call to order. Today is Tuesday, September 12th, 2023. This meeting is being video and audio recorded for future cable broadcasts. Please silence all cell phones for the duration of the meeting. May I entertain a motion to open our meeting officially? Do you have a second?
Second.
Roll call please. Yes. Mrs. Carrera?
Yes.
Mr. Harper? Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We are doing things a little bit differently, moving forward with the consent agenda. And so I have something to report that. Everything listed in the consent agenda was distributed in advance of the meeting. Does anyone have any requests for something to be removed from the consent agenda and discussed or voted on separately? Take a look at those two items there, the approval of minutes and payroll.
All right.
Okay. May I have a motion to approve/accept the items listed in the consent agenda? And let me just read them first. It's the approval of minutes of August 15th, 2023, and the approval of payroll and warrants.
Okay.
Second, second. Any discussion? Roll call please. Yes. Mrs. Carrera?
Yes.
Mr. Harper?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously. Do we have anyone for delegation? Decide sign that. Very good. Well, delegation is being checked on. We have no old business, and there is no delegation. So we're going to move right on to new business. Superintendent's report, Dr. Bailey.
Okay, good evening, everyone. First up, we have our technology update. I'd like to call Mr. Miss Leach to the podium, please.
Good evening, everyone. We have some good updates for you. A couple of things. While we're in front of the public, I wanted to mention our Chromebook insurance update. We've been pushing this out pretty hard. We've done it last year as well. We negotiated a good price. It's approximately $33. And we do hope all families take advantage of that opportunity. That is the cheapest price for anything. Your keyboards cost $72 to be replaced on a Chromebook. It's roughly $100-something dollars for your screen, et cetera, et cetera, broken USB ports, you name it. $33 means complete damage or destruction of that Chromebook is replaced by the insurance company. We have a lot of parents that have signed up already, so please take the opportunity to jump into that if possible. Student Chromebooks. We had a large influx of new students this year. We've rolled out all the devices and every student set emails, Aspen Access, et cetera, standard use standard year stuff. So far, so good. Copiers. In the mix of everything else that we've been doing, we updated four of our older copiers in district. The older copiers had a few issues, age, wear and tear, undersized. We found that in the past, those devices actually weren't really good for our large use. So now they are. They're updated, they're on the Paper Cut system, and we've gotten a lot of good reports back on that. One fun one for us, USAC, our emergency connectivity funds. This goes to Angie Ruggeri. She submitted a request a long time ago, and they actually passed the window. We thought all the schools were done, we weren't going to get any of this. We pretty much exhausted the resources on that. And then, we're not sure if it was due to the millionaire tax or whatever they did in the state of mass, but they came back, they opened it back up and said, hey, you guys actually get awarded $86,262. It goes towards Chromebooks. You have to specify what you wanted. Angie back a year and a half ago essentially put it in there for that. So we have to stick with the Chromebook piece, and we're going to utilize that for next year, so that's going to be a savings for the district. That's huge. That's fantastic for us. So thank you, Angie. Touch use. Kind of going back, earlier I did a 10-year projection plan, and we did an inventory of this district. We found there's a lot of inequality, a lot of teachers didn't have the same as other teachers. So we've gone ahead, thanks to the beautiful management of our budget from Patrick McIntyre and the superintendent, Dr. Paula Bailey. We've replaced 15 of those projectors, Promethean boards, et cetera, with our brand-new touch view units to mirror what we have in this district. So now we have actually removed that inequality as far as touch use go, and that is now updated. So we are a year to two years ahead on that project, so that's fantastic. We've gotten awesome feedback. Teachers are super happy with those devices. So there's our update for tech for this one. Any questions, concerns, thoughts?
I do have one comment for parents out there that bought the Chromebook insurance last year. I received a bill in the mail, and I think it was like $52 because it was just regenerating, so I called them and said, I think we have a lower amount, and they said, yes, you do. So just a heads up for parents out there, if you don't have that $33 on there to make phone calls, maybe you might need to have it.
Awesome, I love that. Yes, please. Any parents that see any difference than $33, let us know, we'll help you.
It was very easy calling them.
Cool. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Thank you, Dr. Can we have a chair? Can we just go back on the consent agenda? Because we did a roll call both things or just for the aim?
Note the consent was to cut off.
Oh, great. Yeah.
Yep.
Okay. All right, next thing, this is just informational that the committee had asked for. It's a report on the exits over the past year. So I've included that in your packet, so you can see what bargaining unit they're from and what, you know, what the reasons are, and that totally aligns with our Aspen system as far as what we have to put in for reasoning. So I didn't think it was bad at all. As a matter of fact, we have several people who have either left education, had to leave for personal reasons, family issues, you know, the comments have been the exit interviews that they absolutely love working in the district. Of course, you have a couple that need for higher-paying jobs, but overall, not bad. So you can have that report for informational purposes.
Thank you.
Next, I'd like to call Mrs. Sylvia and Mrs. Ruggeri to the podium. This year at the middle school, we started advisory classes, and this is part of our social-emotional learning. We've already seen a huge impact that it's had over the short time since we've met in school. They will be reviewing with you what advisory is, and it's new in the schedule this year.
Good evening, Vice Chair and members of the school committee, Dr. Bailey. Tonight, we're excited to share with you about a new initiative at the middle school called Responsive Classroom. Responsive Classroom is a, has a focus on engaging academics, positive community, effective management, and developmental awareness, and it helps educators to create a joyful, safe learning environment where students can develop their academic and social and emotional skills so that all students can thrive in the environment, in the school environment. And this is an evidence-based approach to teaching and discipline. And Responsive Classroom does happen to be a local, well, a Massachusetts organization as well.
So why Responsive Classroom? Well, we looked at the surveys. The surveys revealed a need for developing a sense of belonging, increasing student engagement, building a social-emotional academic skills of our student population, fostering strong, mutually respectful relationships between the adults and the students here at Ford. So what we did was we broke down a student body, 430 students, into groups of 10 to 12, and we used almost every single person in this school. If I could use a Body Grace and a Susanna Souza to do an advisory, I would, but it would leave my office unmanned. So I think in the morning-
Every adult, no matter what their position was, has advisory.
The paraprofessionals, the special educators, the counselors, we are all on board, all hands on deck for this huge undertaking, but it has already in the two weeks, we've seen just a great atmosphere in the morning. So the teachers, the parents, administrators, we attended PD on August 28th, the first day. They came right back into the building and they attended PD. Every student starts with an advisory block, 8 o'clock to about 8:25, 8:30. In there, the teachers and the students build a sense of belonging in the small supportive group setting. We have slides already set out for every single day. They start with a greeting, an announcement, school-wide announcements, an activity, an acknowledgement, and there's time for reflection built in. The growth mindset is there, goal setting is there. Students will be creating goals for their academic and their social, whatever they feel they need to make a goal on. Everything is included. So these are two pictures of the staff. We had two classrooms going, and the way they were grouped was how our students are grouped. Not as small, but they were in groups of four, and the groups of four, they reach a consensus, then they turn and talk to somebody else, and turn and talk to somebody else. And the goal at the end is that this is a little family, 10 to 12 students, they belong somewhere every single morning, no questions asked. This slide's an activity. Complete the IAM web, be prepared to share with your small group. This is happening, so all the activities right now are the same, five through eight, and once we get this going and up, we have three more days left of training. We didn't do all four at the same time with our schedule. So once everything is up and running, we'll be able to venture out eighth graders, we'll be doing different activities than fifth graders, but right now, we're doing the same thing. Mr. G's advisory group last week. You can see there's about 10 or 12 of them. They come in with a smile and they leave with a smile. Coach St. Jean, our PE teacher, is with Mrs. Pulis, our guidance counselor. This is on Spirit Day on Friday. Questions?
So as the baseline, are you using last year's, that last group of data point?
The Panorama?
Yeah.
The Panorama survey data.
Okay. And then that will- And that will, you'll be doing that survey again?
Six weeks in the end of October, mid-October, I think the week around October 24th, 22nd, around that week, we'll give the Panorama survey.
And then we do it again at the end of the year.
Mm-hmm. Love it. John, any comments?
Just one quick question, is the pledge done during this time?
The pledge is actually still done out loud in the office, so we have one student who comes down every morning, does the morning announcements, they do the Pledge of Allegiance, they do the GO, the Good Morning Cheer, and they do lunch. Those three are still done, and I believe that will continue. Everything else is on the announcement page that the advisor goes over with the children.
Thank you very much. I'm sorry, I might not know, this probably happens every day, but I might not know, like, there's teachers out at the buses greeting the kids, somebody sitting at the door, teachers are outside their classroom, say good morning.
The counselors are always out front, Ariel DeCosta as well, the school psychologist, at the back door with Officer Calfgar for now. Usually I am up front, but I'm in the back right now with the P.
Yeah.
And we greet all the students every morning coming on in. Yes.
Perfect.
I will say that I have checked in with a lot of the students, and my question at the middle school has been, how do you like advisory? And I'm getting very positive feedback from the students. And I also attended the training that the staff had, and I will say, all of the staff were very engaged, and I felt like the staff was really buying in. So I think they're looking, they enjoyed that PD, it was a full day, and they're enjoying, they're going to look forward, at least that's what they're saying, to the next ones that we have. Some are half-days now, but we will get in four days of complete training with Responsive Classroom.
What I like about it as a parent, I've spoken with my son about it, and it gears them up for the real classrooms.
Yes.
So it's not right into math, right into science, right? It's something, you know, that sort of gears them up, which is fantastic. Well done.
Thank you.
Thank you, ladies and gentlemen. All right, next up, we have policies, a second reading, and I'd be asking for a vote on each, and I'll go through one by one. And then, if we could, have a chair, roll on each one separately. The first one is IHBI, the preschool one. We basically took out the names and dates, we took out any operational aspects of it, and you can see the changes with the red cross out. And this is your second reading, so I don't know if anybody has any questions, but if you don't, I would ask for a motion to approve IHBI, the preschool policy.
Any discussions to have? I'd like to entertain a motion to approve the revised H, I'm sorry, IHBI preschool policy. I'll make a motion.
Second.
Any further discussion? Roll call please. Mrs. Stone?
Yes.
Yes.
Mr. Harper?
Yes.
And Mrs. Carrera?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you. The next one in your packet is KF, Community Use of School Facilities. And basically, we just adopted the MAS-C policy. We removed any operational, we took the fee schedule out as a separate document, but this way, when we make changes, we just go with the MAS-C, and it makes it much easier. So unless anybody has any questions, I would ask for approval on that one too.
I'd just like to say one thing about this particular policy. It was multiple pages, so when the policy subcommittee met with us, we felt that it needed to be more general, and giving the operational standpoint to superintendent was appropriate.
It's changed the direction.
No, no, it doesn't. And anything changed with, when it comes to the fee schedule, still has to come back to the super community for approval, so it makes sense to have five pages.
All right, I'd like to entertain a motion to approve the revised KF, Use of School Facilities.
Absolutely.
Second. Roll call please.
Yes.
Yes. Mr. Harper?
Yes.
And Mrs. Carrera?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously.
The next one is very similar to what we just did, KF-R, Community Use of School Facilities. And again, we're just adopting the MAS-C policy.
Absolutely.
Let me just say it right first, okay? I'd like to entertain a motion to approve the KF-R Use of School Facilities.
Okay.
John, you got a list?
Second.
Second. No discussion? Roll call please. Stone?
Yes.
Mr. Harper?
Yes.
Mr. Harper?
Yes.
And Mr. Carrera?
Yes.
Okay, and the last one is KF-E, which is an attached exhibit for the use of, for the use of school facilities. Well, release of all claims, it goes in facilities, but basically, the town, we advised by the town insurance agency to increase the coverage, and you can see the changes on that document. So I would be asking for approval of KF-E as an attached exhibit.
I'd like to just address that for one second. The additional insurances, that doesn't affect NTO, the ATA for getting.
I don't believe so.
Any giant increase in premiums or anything like that? Just to make sure.
This was just something that advised us on.
All right, I'd like to entertain a motion to approve the revised KF-D, is it revised or a new policy?
It's an attached exhibit. It's revised.
I'd like to entertain a motion to approve the revised KF-E Use of School Facilities.
So, second.
Any discussions? Roll call please. Stone?
Yes.
Mr. Hip?
Yes.
Mr. Harper?
Yes.
And Mrs. Carrera?
Yes.
Thank you. The next thing I have on my report is, we had a donation, a really nice donation from the foundation of Why Not a Pair? And if you can remember, when we were in our workshop, they actually delivered 20 backpacks filled with school supplies, taken from our school supply list. We gave them a list of families in need, students in need, and they went to work by grade level and filled all of these backpacks, and everything was just superb quality. We really appreciate it, but at this time, I'd be asking for a vote to officially accept that donation, and we'd like to send an acknowledgement to Why Not a Pair Foundation.
So I'd like to entertain a motion at this time to approve and accept the donation, the 20 backpacks from, what's the name of the company?
Why Not a Pair.
Why Not a Pair?
Foundation.
Foundation?
Absolutely.
Do I have a second?
Second.
This doesn't need a roll call, so all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Anyone opposed? Anyone abstaining? Motion passes unanimously.
I do have a couple of other items that were not ready in time when the agenda was done. This is informational. There was a FEMA meeting that happened, and they're going to be doing a test on October 4th, and that test is going to be through wireless phones during the school day. And the reason why I'm letting the school committee know, and I want to let the public know, is that prior to October 4th, the school plans to put out a one-call to let people know, so that when they get this emergency alert on their phones, they're just going to realize it's a test and there's not a big emergency at the school. So I just, again, this is informational. What will appear on their phone, this is a test of the National Wireless Emergency Alert System, no action is needed, but the reason why I bring it up is because this is happening during school hours, and just as a precaution, we just want people to know that there's no emergency at the school.
Can we also make sure it's posted on our Facebook page when we do have that one call?
Yes.
And maybe like the morning of the fourth, just throw it out there too?
Yes.
I can just see the panel.
Yes, I can too.
Well, and that's why we want to message it out. We'll do the one-call, we'll be emailing the alert, but we will definitely message it out so that people know. And if we do get calls, we will spread that away, but I think by doing this, we will probably avoid a lot of panic. Okay? All right, next, in your packet, I just added it, is the school committee norms. During our workshop, we had talked about our norms. So the first sheet that looks like this, this was approved back a couple of years ago, so what I would like you to do over the course of the month is look it over, because we do have a big member since this was adopted by the school committee. If you're not in agreement, you want to add something different, you are certainly welcome to bring that up for discussion, but this way, it will give everyone a month. My suggestion would be a month. And then, I also added a document from MAS-C about protocols, on how to run effective school committee meetings, which you can look that over as well. But this was more informational tonight. I will put it back on next month's agenda if anybody has any changes that they would like to make. If not, my recommendation will be to approve a document for the norms next month moving forward.
So should we bring our suggestions if we do want to revise anything to our next meeting?
Yes. Yes. If you want to send them to me ahead of time, I can type them up, so they're all in one document and show the differences. We can certainly do that. That would be fine, and I'll put a reminder about that.
You all agree with that, John?
I think so. I guess my only comment would be, if we were going to see significant changes to this, I mean, I'd like it as part of the workshop, I don't know whether we should consider it, but-
Yeah, no, I agree with that.
And I would put wording like votes may be taken.
Right.
So if we choose not to do a vote, we can certainly push it off for workshop.
Can we note that for next meeting?
Yes, absolutely.
Frankly, I think I was part of these, and I need to read through them again, if I feel differently.
Yeah, absolutely. Okay. And the last thing I have, I wasn't at the last school committee meeting, but there was discussion about backpacks in the classroom, and I did put it out there to the superintendents, and I did get some information back, so I just wanted to share that with you. 22 superintendents responded, 14 responded that backpacks are not allowed in the classroom and kept in their lockers, seven responded that backpacks are allowed in the classroom, and one responded that they're still determining because there's been changes since COVID. So majority was, it was a low response, but the majority was that they are kept in lockers, but this, if this is something that's important to the committee, this is certainly something that I can discuss with the principal moving forward.
I think I did ask, but I don't give it, yes.
You have a part of just the see-through plastic bags, you know, we talked about kids carrying their books and supplies.
John, I don't think it's a safety issue of that more often as kids fiddling around with the backpacks, but again, I deterred it to, deferred it to Paula to talk to the principals to figure out the reasoning behind that. But even according to the gentleman that did our safety thing, that wasn't something that we were supposed to be looking at anyways, so.
When I thought of your concerns last night, I thought, would you, that it could be a response to it, so, to see through.
And because you're referring to the, from the shares tomorrow?
So, I don't recall him bringing up anything about-
He didn't, he didn't bring it. That's why I'm saying, so it's not a huge issue that he felt was supposed to be. Anything else, Dr. Bailey?
No, that concludes my report tonight, thank you.
And you'll get back to us on the conversations that you have.
Yes. And I just want to say that it's been a school's opening. Yeah, everything's going well in both schools, so thank you so much.
Moving on to the business, business coordinator's report.
Good evening, Vice Chair, I'm Mr. Stone, and the school committee. When I say I have a quick update today, I have a quick update, so I know that'll make you all smile.
Do you have money? Yes.
We have money. Honestly, it's been a great start to the school year from a budgetary standpoint. Our entire leadership team has bought into, you know, the systematic things that I've put into place, you know, budget sheets, open communications, being proactive and getting ahead of, you know, future charges, get the POs in now, planning accordingly. So we've been off to a great start, and it's exciting to see everything in motion, so it's making my life a little bit easier from a fiscal standpoint. Next month, I have a Masbo workshop for budgeting that I'm looking forward to, and from there, I'm hoping that we can, you know, coordinate that with budget subcommittee meetings to run a timeline and get, you know, the FY25 budget in motion, because that's what the falls for, following there, so.
And we do talk about having it mirror the old colony budget and how that was presented.
So as far as the details that we're going to present?
Yeah.
Yes, we can, we can certainly work on that as a, as a committee, but we have the capacity to some extent to do that. Their reports are run directly out of their accounting system, which is different than ours, but we have comparable-
Now that you've gone through the whole thing, where you're able to feel a little more organized with that.
Yes, yes, correct.
Very good. Yeah, we wanted the details and the finance committee, and the support selection, and also agreeing with that. John and I, who are in the budgeting committee, I think that's an idea, just to rattle the apples to apples.
All right, so moving on, you know, I said it last meeting, but I just want to say it again, you know, I really appreciate the efforts that our facilities team has put into place to get the school open. It's not an easy task, they work hard all summer, and sometimes I feel like it's an unappreciated position, but, you know, I know everyone from the leadership team is grateful. We've run into some load blocks here and there, but they've worked overtime, extra hours, you know, weekends, whatever it takes, you know, for our faculty and our students. So thank you to them, all in all, you know, we were ready, you know, we were ready as could be. There's some efficiencies to gain, and we're already making, you know, putting those things into motion, changing locations for summer programming, having a better timeline, you know, to get through the classrooms, setting priority in certain areas, so each year will improve, but, you know, it wasn't because of lack of effort on their part, so I just want to say thank you to them again. Because we talked about use of facilities policies, I just wanted to share that, you know, even with the changes, all of our frequent users of our facilities have come back, we have negotiated contract terms, which we're finalizing to get signed and get into motion. You know, we're here to work with the community. Again, the message wasn't to profit from our change in fees, but it was to maintain our space and keep the lights on, you know, at the additional costs that it would be incurred for, and everybody has been amicable to that, so it's been great. Food service, again, similar to facilities, you know, everybody was geared up and ready to go, you know, we had some changes in place, we're looking at new equipment, we've got new tables, and we have changes on the horizon that we're prepared for. Just the other day, we had a nice team meeting where we talked about things that, you know, are going well and aren't going well, and we're going to set up more team meetings for the future to stay on the same track and to continue with, you know, group buy-in from everybody, so I'm excited for that, and I do think, you know, there's a lot to still show in the cafeteria department. I do, we do a great job, but we have, we have some high goals that we're setting, and I'm excited. I'm excited to meet those.
Patrick, are we getting, the ones that we had available, have those been spent with the updated equipment, or are they not installed yet, or where exactly are we with all of that? Are we getting new equipment?
So, so the tables that we purchased were procured, everything went through the school lunch revolving fund. The equipment that we're looking at has to go through the same procurement process, we've kind of pulled back a little bit, we're going to do, you know, same equipment in both kitchens at once, then we pulled back and said, maybe we do one and train on it and see how it works, and if it's a good fit before we commit ourselves to two. So, you know, we're kind of seeing how that goes, but we wanted to get our feet under us for the school year, but again, all those things are in motion, we know the vendors that we want to work with, we have all their, you know, their quotes put together, it's just, when we say go, we're going to be ready to go. And then we're still working on, you know, sort of a ten-year plan like the technology department, where we know the age of our equipment, when it's going to turn over, when we're going to replace it, we get that on a good cycle that we can maintain, so.
That's clear to refer to, I mean, it's fairly substantial now.
Correct.
But I think after, we could work on the long range, and think about how we're going to strategically utilize.
Yeah, so, you know, just to shed some light on that, we take an inventory of all of our equipment, we've gotten, you know, procedural manuals and things like that in place to, you know, understand PPE we need with the equipment that we have, is it functioning properly? And again, we're kind of building it up from there. You know, menu was a prioritization, you know, from the school committee's feedback, so that kind of took a lot of attention, but, you know, we just got the extra hours from last school committee meeting to get some personnel in space, so that our director can focus more on her director chores, and that's going to be a part of it, so.
I'm sure you see some change.
As far as equipment or the menu, I guess.
Remember, we were getting like, uh, stoves to maybe do like.
Yeah, so that was the equipment I was talking about, so, you know.
But you had to be there, you think? You know me.
We have to read, yes, but we have to read the temperature on everything, you know, we think we're going to be able to put two step, you know, one step forward and it ends up two steps back, so we don't want to overwhelm our staff, we don't want to completely overhaul our menu and scare people away from different meal choices and things that they're used to. You know, we brought back alacard snacks, you know, we changed menu prices for second meals, things like that, so we're letting all those take place before we, you know, go out there. We talked about the tasting and the sampling, you know, we did that at Open House, so we're going to see more of that, and what we need is to see our participation. We've been open for two weeks, so we need to know what our production records are at, you know, how many meals we're, you know, selling, so on and so forth, so there's a plan in place, but it's, it's a marathon, not a sprint necessarily, so we're getting there. Did I say that backwards?
Yeah.
And then transportation, so again, you know, this has taken a lot of my focus at the beginning of the year, but I think we're finally at a place where registrations are slowing down. Again, that's kind of laughable when the deadline is June, but, you know, we've accommodated everybody as well as possible. The public's been patient with us, too, I know, you know, just because they might have missed the registration or someone, it throws off their work schedule in getting kids to and from school, but we're working with them, the bus company's been phenomenal to work with for these changes, and we're making good progress. We have a meeting with the drivers this week to go over, you know, expectations for the year, questions and concerns from our principals, our sped director, myself, their team, and, you know, we're just going to keep building that relationship so that we have a successful transportation plan there. That's about all I have.
Yeah, the other question, I would say, maybe with facilities, we're having some trouble with candidates, so I could say just us, are there roadblocks there, is it just a matter of the number of qualified candidates, or anything that you took into consideration?
Yeah, so it's a combination of everything, you know, we're not really getting too many hits, and when we do, the qualifications aren't necessarily there. You know, the negotiated rates in the contract, I think they're hindering us from attracting top talent, especially when there's agencies out there that are, you know, charging forty-five dollars to lend us an employee, so I can only imagine they're getting paid more than what we can offer, but again, we're tied to the contract at that point, so, again, we're doing the best we can, we're offering overtime hours to the guys, that are the girls and the guys on our staff, and they're working hard, you know, we're keeping it together, we're in motion, but, I mean, these vacancies go back to winter of last year still. We have substitutes in, so, but we would like a permanent solution, I think everybody shares that sentiment, so, you know, we're doing the best we can, and we can only interview the candidates that come in, but we're trying, that's all I can say there.
Any other questions?
All right, thank you, everybody.
Moving on to school committee member reports, Mr. Haprock, do you have anything to report? Mrs. Pajara? You sure?
No. In addition, I don't either. Actually, if we could just talk about for her next meeting, and just, I don't know if you can talk to Mrs. Downing about this, the heat issue that we had during this past week, and prior to that, just want to talk about more about the, not the protocol, but from a policy standpoint, from a school committee, if there's anything that we can do to help the situation, and I'll just leave it as general as that for Mrs. Downing, you, and we need to discuss.
Do you want me to ask Mrs. Downing for a tour of the policy subcommittee, or do you want it back to the full committee?
Um, let's, if we can do it to the subcommittee, I think that's a great start, because we might have to get Jim Hardy involved, I'm not sure, but I know, I don't want to say anything more without Mrs. Downing.
Okay.
I don't want to take it off the radar, Richard.
All right, moving to communication and information, everyone in their packets has a personnel report, letter to families from August twenty-one, letter to staff from August twenty-one, district newsletter from September eleventh, AES newsletter from July thirty-first, twenty-ninth, and September seventh, and then the FMS newsletters from August ninth, twenty-sixth, and September fifth. I do want to say to all the principals, those newsletters are amazing, there's everything that you need there, so if any parents call us, just look at the newsletter, because they're, they're missing it, because everything isn't there, so thank you those two, for all of you for putting that together, as well as the district newsletter as well, has every, every contact that you need, and it's, it's really nice. Okay, so we are, and I'm going to bear with me, everyone, on this one, let me try to do this correctly. We are going to go into executive session pursuant to the GLC three-zero-A twenty-one-eight-three to discuss strategy with respect to mitigation specifically in the matter of Amorale Bus Company versus a cushion of public schools, docket number two-two-seven-three-C-B zero-zero-zero-one-two, votes may be taken, as well as to discuss the deployment of security personnel advices or strategies with respect here to safety and security of staff and students. We will not be returning to open session because it will affect the detriment of public individuals.
And she has so declares.
The chair declares.
Yeah, the detriment of how that may affect.
We need to keep it.
And then just mention that the next meeting.
And then the next meeting, the next regular school committee meeting will be held in the John T. Byers Library in the Ford Middle School on top Tuesday, October tenth, twenty-twenty-three, at five-thirty PM. Now we can have a motion to close our public meeting and adjourn to our executive session. The conclusion? Get that, you have a second? Can we get a roll call?
Yes.
Yes.
Mr. Haprock?
Yes.
And Mrs. Pajara?
Yes.
Good night, everyone, thank you for coming.